Call the public hearing of regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, November 14th to order. May we staff and pledge allegiance? All right, so Clark. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free public interest of this country. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did that flag move?
It did move.
It moved it for photos.
Oh, you moved it for photos.
No, it did not move.
It's getting closer. Amy, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Crisieux?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here.
First item on the agenda is public discussion. Items not on the agenda. Oh, Rob, we kind of count on those. All right, well, it's all for that. Okay, you had your chance. Next item, Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2018 Community Application and Subrecipient Agreement. Amy?
We're requesting the city commission hold a public hearing on the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program, CNDG, the application and subrecipient agreement. This is through Oakland County, which is ministers to the program for HUD. The city is eligible to receive $6,000 under this program. We currently spend the program on senior services, which helps offset some of the costs of the 50-plus club dinners and the senior trips and any other senior citizen workshops that we do at community center.
Well, I will, with that, I will open the public hearing. Anybody want to comment?
Do it.
Do it. Nobody's here. Close the public. Is there a motion to approve the application and subrecipient agreement?
Mayor, I move that the Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2018, application and subrecipient agreement be approved and that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Amy, can you vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieux?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. It will be signed. Thank you. The next item, ordinance to amend Chapter 74 Utilities by the addition of the new article, Article 8, entry onto private property, Section 74-340 intent, Section 74-341 definitions, Section 74-342 regulation, and Section 74-343 trespass. Jim, can you just, before we open the public hearing?
This ordinance would require utilities and their subcontractors to provide advance notice when they're doing work in the utility rights of way that run along the rear property lines of properties in the city. It doesn't stop them from doing any work, it just sets forth our expectations for them to notify and to have identification on hand at all times, so that residents do know who to contact if there are any issues. And this is in response to some of the issues we had with AT&amp;T and their subcontractors And so, that's the high-level summary. Greg needs to develop the ordinance, and we can answer any further questions you have on that.
Okay. Are there any questions from the front before we open to the hearing?
Quick question. How will the utilities find out about this ordinance?
Right, well, we will send it as best we can to their government relations offices. You know, AT&amp;T, Comcast are massive organizations, so we'll try to get to the right people to make them aware. DT is not a problem, we have government affairs reps there. They're never the problem for this anyways, so we will contact, probably, for AT&amp;T, we'll contact the people that we've been in touch with through this last round of problems. So, we will do that. And then, any problems arise in the future, they'll become aware at that time.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone who wants to comment on the ordinance? All right. Well, it's a public hearing, kids, I thought this was it.
They didn't have sucker shit.
Sure, Nicholas is going to come up and start to... Moving on, do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move with the ordinance 426, amending Chapter 74 Utilities by the addition of a new article, Article 8, entry onto private property, Section 74-340 intent, Section 74-341 definitions, Section 74-342 regulation, and Section 74-343 trespass be adopted.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion before we take it out? Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieux?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. We have a new ordinance. Excellent.
Sir Mayor, I just wanted to say, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna miss having Jay, like, his monotone description of these ordinance. It's so perfect. So, Amanda will have to, you know, pick that up.
I was hoping that we'd get two or four more ordinancees. But we may have him call them in every once in a while.
Yeah, it's fun.
Okay, the next item is city commission liaison reports. We'll start with Commissioner Scott and Historical Commission.
Sure. Only things to report for this meeting is the Historical Commission will sort of be going into hibernation until January. No meetings until January. And stay tuned for people from the Historical Commission to reach out, for people to participate in the annual home and garden tour. The goal this year is to get more participants signed up before the end of the year, so that things are set well into 2018. We have the correct number of houses to participate in, to make it just a little bit easier.
Good.
And so, stay tuned for that.
Will you be covering pictures for Santa Claus? Is that Historical Commission?
The Historical Commission will be covering reindeer.
Yes.
They'll be covering reindeer.
And the photographs, we handle here, the city handles them.
Okay. But I knew they had some...
Yeah.
You're covering the reindeer.
Exactly.
Good for you. Glad you're doing it.
Two reindeer.
I'm glad it's your job, not mine.
Oh, yeah. One other thing, the museum will be open this weekend, Saturday from 10 until noon.
Good. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Crisieux, Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last Recreation Commission meeting, Scott Peterzak went over the pool season in review. It was a recap of the information that Scott had presented at last month's city commission meeting. In addition to that, there was nothing else at the meeting, but we did want to alert all the residents that there are two big events coming up. We talked about the tree lighting that's on the fort, and before that, on Saturday morning, December 2nd, there'll be a Christmas breakfast for the younger Ridgers. And that'll be at the community center, and you can contact Sean or Scott for the details on that. Finally, I did want to announce that there will be two vacancies on the Recreation Commission coming up, and that if you are interested in getting more involved, if you're interested in recreation specifically, there are applications available online, and Amy will take those here at City Hall. But we'll have two vacancies coming up in the new year. So, if that's something you're interested in, if you always wanted to get involved, it's to be a great opportunity. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Foreman? You know, it's supposed to make this long, if you'd like.
No, no, I won't suggest you do that. This is my final reports for Nell's Schools, but I know we're all looking forward to additional reports coming from the mysterious person that hasn't been selected. We'll find out next month.
Everything's up.
I'd like to share something that's cool for the community and also cool for the schools. There's a new program that's been put together by the Green Schools group at, well, mostly the upper elementary. This is called Cartridges for Kids, and it's a program where you can recycle your printer cartridges that normally you might throw away or not know what to do with. Sometimes there's a little returnist thing in the box with the new one you buy, it doesn't always get there. So, this is a nice way that you can return this thing and not throw it in the trash, and it'll raise money for the school. So, these bins are located at the Ferndale Public Library, it's a blue bin, as well as at the upper elementary. So, for most of us, it's probably easy to just go to the library, if you happen to be there anyway. Bring your extra cartridges, drop them off, and do the right thing for the environment, raise some money for the schools, too. Next item is Just for Kicks. This is an annual entertaining event. It's an adult talent show slash variety show. You may have heard about it last year, or the year before, or the year before that. It's always a lot of fun. This year will be no different. It's $15 per ticket. It's coming up at 7:00 PM. That's when the doors open. 8:00 PM is when the show starts, this Saturday. So, I will not be making an appearance in this year, I'm sorry, but Mary will be, I think, be making two appearances.
Except the Loving Touch.
Go for that. Except the Loving Touch, and thank you very much. Loving Touch in Ferndale. So, again, the whole point of this is to raise money for the open classroom program, the outdoor education program, and it's to provide scholarships for the kids who maybe can't afford to pay for the camp program this summer. So, this way, every student can go. Next, we have one item that's already been discussed a little bit this evening, is Detroit Concert for a Cure. This is coming up Monday, December 4th, from 7 to 10 PM, where the National Touring Cast of an American in Paris will be performing at the Loving Touch. They will not be performing selections from that particular musical, but they will be providing all kinds of entertainment and other types of musical acts. The event benefits Broadway Cares, which is an AIDS charity, as well as Ferndale Blessings in a Backpack. Finally, for this mysterious person, the upcoming school board meeting will take place this coming Monday, November 20th, 7:00 PM, FHS Media Center.
Be there.
Yes. So, that is the end of my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One of the best you've ever...
I appreciate that. I forget the location, but I support the ordinance.
We wouldn't have been upset if it was like that. Commissioner Perry, Planning, DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and DDA met on Monday, October 23rd, for their regular meeting. Their agenda, their agendas included a discussion about the solar energy system regulations, and one of the big topics about that is, do we maintain our current standards for our, or amend them, to allow solar panels on street faces of homes? And so, you know, the discussion is, you know, we're a historical district, but, you know, will this interfere with that? And, you know, allowing, you know, just having that discussion as an amendment to our ordinance. And so, they did decide they do want to bring that forward and have a public discussion, a public, what is it, a public hearing on December 11th, right here at City Hall, at 7 o'clock. So, on December 11th, so we're sort of discussing if this will be, if that's something we allow or not in the, you know, moving forward. Also, they discussed, the Planning Commission set a date for the public hearing to consider having our Sunoco station in Pleasant Ridge being allowed to get a designated merchant liquor license, and that will allow them to sell beer and wine out of the gas station up there. So, that'll be another public hearing that will be on December 11th.
So, I have to clarify on that?
Oops.
Licenses for off-premises consumption.
Yes. Yes, not while you're eating.
I know you're making your eye over there.
It's a very, yeah, it's a cute new pergola. No cocktails with the...
No wine in your sundays.
No. So, right, so it is...
It's also local.
Yeah, it's what, so it'll be a good, both of these will be good discussions. I mean, the Planning Commission has had a really great in-depth discussion, you know, looking at all sides of the whole thing with the solar panels, and, you know, they put some good different parameters on that. So, that'll be something, you know, stay tuned and watch the upcoming, their meeting agenda, and you can see all of what that ordinance will entail. Okay, that's all, sorry.
That's it? No, no.
Thanks.
Anything else, question marks? All right. We'll move on to the next item, consideration of the official certification and election report of the general election held Tuesday, November 7th, 2017.
So, there was an election November 7th.
Very good.
And 1,038 Pleasant Ridge showed up.
Pretty amazing.
We did count the absentee ballots in the precincts, so Precinct 1 ended up with 513 ballots cast, and Precinct 2, 525. That's about 44% of the registered voters cast the ballot, 24% in 2015, 52% in 2013, 45% in 2011. The mayor received 822 votes. Mr. Shawn Campbell received 273 votes. Alex Lingo received 344. Brett Scott, 632, and Amanda Wall, 637. The police pension stabilization mileage, 827 yes votes and 195 no votes. I did receive the official canvas and certification from the county late yesterday. They're out, if you'd like to take a look at them. So, it's been canvassed and official, and the votes are in.
We're good. You can be sworn in.
I know, I know.
Is that cool? Yeah, I, just to reiterate, thanks to the 1,038 people who actually voted, and we were, we had the top turnout, all communities that had elections in the tri-county area, so.
Wow.
So, that's pretty good. Pretty good.
Mr. Mayor, is there any kind of bet? Lieutenant Woods, don't you often have a wager?
I've learned not to anymore, because it feeds us, so I just, this was the time I should've, and I blew it. We beat them handily.
Handily.
Handily. So, there.
Okay.
That's it. So, now we gotta do this.
So, we're asking that you receive and file the official certification and election report.
Okay, is there a motion to receive and file?
Sir Mayor, I move the official certification and election report of November 7th, 2017, city general election, be received and filed.
Good. Is there a second?
I second that.
I doubt there's discussion.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisieux?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. We are received and filed. And now, we move on to...
Office of Office.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of this state...
That I will support the Constitution of this state...
The Constitution of the United States.
The United States.
Yeah. The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office of mayor...
Of the office of mayor...
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain...
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain...
...an honest and efficient administration...
An honest and efficient administration...
...of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge...
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge...
...free from partisan distinction or control...
Free from partisan distinction or control...
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Senator.
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the state of Michigan...
The Constitution of the state of Michigan...
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code...
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office of city commissioner...
Of the office of city commissioner...
And that I will endeavor to secure and maintain...
And that I will endeavor to secure and maintain...
...an honest and efficient administration...
An honest and efficient administration...
...of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge...
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge...
...free of partisan distinction or control...
Free of partisan distinction or control...
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know we missed, I'm sorry.
I was so overcome.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the state of Michigan...
The Constitution of the state of Michigan...
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code...
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office of city commissioner...
Of the office of city commissioner...
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain...
I will endeavor to secure and maintain...
...an honest and efficient administration...
An honest and... An honest and efficient administration...
...of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge...
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge...
...free from partisan distinction or control...
Free from partisan distinction or control...
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Is this it?
Yeah.
Look at that!
You did good, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good one.
Sorry. One more.
The Jays.
The Jigs. Attention. These chairs are smaller.
My coat.
No more ties.
We will miss you, Jay. I'm just, it's exciting to see we've gotten so much more hair up here. I'm just saying. Now I can look in both ways. Overcome by the... Okay, and next item on the agenda, Amanda gets to listen to Robert Wittenberg for Governmental Reports. Robert! Nice of you to be here for this momentous...
Thank you, yes. You did know me. Came to visit me in Lansing.
Tell him to take his coat off and stay a while, but...
I'm running from place to place.
He's letting you to run.
I'm running from place to place. I feel like I'm so far away right now, but that's all right. First, I just, I'll be brief, so you won't have to listen to me for too long, but the first thing, I just wanted to come thank, now former Commissioner Foreman. This is a, this can be a very thankless job, you know, public service, and you did a wonderful job here. I know, we worked together on a few things, you would reach out to me, and, you know, I think you've done a really great job here for Pleasant Ridge, and so, just want to thank you for your service to the community.
You were the beginning and now you're here at the end.
Yes, yeah, that's right. I want to congratulate our new Commissioner, Commissioner Wall. I know it's, you know, it might be like drinking from a fire hose as you first get started, as you're drinking your water, sorry. But you got a good team surrounding you here to help you out, and if there's ever anything I can do, please let me know.
Thank you.
You know, and on a state level, and that obviously goes for all of you. Congratulate you on a hard-fought election as well.
As I said, I was up till 1:00 in the morning waiting for those absentee votes.
Yeah, good, yeah. Don't take anything for granted here. And congrats on your reelection as well. So, I know this is, you guys will do amazing things and, you know, continue to work really hard on behalf of the residents of Pleasant Ridge, so just wanted to come say that. And then, just briefly, with coffee hours, we had, when we were in Pleasant Ridge, I think it was last month, and again, with seven different communities in the 27th District, we try to rotate every month, so the next one will be the last one of the year. We'll be in Huntington Woods on December 7th, which is a Thursday, at 7:30 at the library, and anyone and everyone's welcome. If you can't make it, as always, feel free to call me or email me, 517-373-0478.
You know it.
I know in my heart now, yeah. I would hope after this amount of time, I finally, took me a while, and then the email, I know as well, this one I should know, robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. So, you know, for any of you, and anyone who's at home, please reach out to me and attend, you know, any of the coffee hours. They're really good informal discussions about what's going on in Lansing, and it's a way for people, if they have questions or suggestions. From one of the coffee hours, I had someone who, constituent that came and had an idea for legislation, and we worked on it, and it actually became law here.
Oh, great.
So, know that you have a voice, and I'm always willing to listen. So, just, you know, again, wanted to encourage people to come out there. And then, just briefly, I won't talk too long on what's going on in Lansing in the interest of time here. The two main issues, auto insurance. There was a bill that was sponsored by Rep. Lana Tice, who's a rep from Brighton, and it was kind of referred to as the Duggan Plan. Mayor Duggan was actually working really hard on the plan as well, along with the Speaker of the House. The bill was entered, you know, the bill was actually put up for a vote on the House floor and failed, which is rare. They usually don't put any votes up to fail. They only put the votes up that they know are going to pass, and this is the second time, actually, that it happened. The last, if you remember, was for the income tax, to roll back and do away with our income tax. So, this is only the second time that it happened. I did vote against it. It's, in my, the way I look at it is, it's just kind of a, you know, it's a break for the insurance companies, really doesn't do much for the drivers here. We have the best benefits in the country, and we know that, and we're working to lower the rates, but the plan that they propose ultimately cuts rates for the insurance companies, and it gives you lower personal injury protection, but based on the numbers, we know that they, with the House Fiscal Agency, it was nonpartisan, said that it would cost the state over $100 million a year on Medicaid, which in essence, so people will be pushed onto Medicaid. If they get in an accident, then they're going to be pushed onto Medicaid, and it's going to cost our state a lot more to take care of these people. And so, I didn't just say no, just to say no, I'm part of a bipartisan package to really address the costs, the, you know, the exorbitant costs in the system, to try to lower the rates without cutting the benefits. Things like implementing a fee schedule for services, attending, addressing attendant care, fraud authority, so a bunch of different things. So, we're working on that, we're hoping that they'll bring that up for a hearing. So, that's kind of what happened on that issue. The other issue you're probably hearing about is, they refer to it as guns in schools. There was a, there were some bills that passed the state senate, which, in essence, closed the loophole. There's a loophole now that you can open carry, they want to close that, but ultimately what they want to do is allow almost anyone to conceal carry in schools now. And as I'm talking to our school administrators, and, you know, I represent four different school districts, as all the different administrators reached out to me and said, "This is, this is a terrible idea." Law enforcement has reached out, saying, "This is a terrible idea." But this went through the senate. We expect it to come up in the House. We are, we're actually on hunting break right now, this week, we're on hunting break, so, yeah, exactly. So, I am, I am here, I'm not out hunting, and so, we're hunting break this week, Thanksgiving next week, then we'll be back right after Thanksgiving. I would expect this to come up, you know, shortly after we get back, would be my understanding. Similar bill to this one, similar bills to this one, these, these bills, I should say, came up in 2012, went to the governor's desk, and he actually vetoed these bills. It was right at the time when Sandy Hook happened, and so, he vetoed these bills, and so, we're hoping, you know, if it does go to his desk, the same thing will happen. They're just, they're dangerous, they really are. And so, I actually wrote an op-ed, if you have a chance, it was in the last week, in Similar bills to this one, these bills, I should say, came up in 2012, went to the Governor's Desk, and he actually vetoed these bills. It was right at the time when Sandy Hook happened. And so, he vetoed these bills. And so, we're hoping, you know, if it does go to his desk, the same thing will happen. They're just... They're dangerous. They really are. And so, I actually wrote an op-ed. If you have a chance, it was in the last week in the Free Press. I'm the Chair of our Gun... I started a gun violence prevention caucus here in Michigan of legislators. And so, it's, you know, we can absolutely respect the Second Amendment while making sure there are certain people who shouldn't have weapons, there are certain places you shouldn't have weapons. So we're, you know, trying to do sensible reforms. It's tough, though. You know, we're working against the current, so... But I wrote an op-ed about some of the things that we're working on. And so, I encourage people, if they haven't seen it yet, go into the Free Press and you can search my name, and I'm sure you'll find it there. So, those are the main two issues that we've been dealing with. Not a lot has actually... I don't know if I brought it up here the last time I was here, but not a lot has really been getting done because currently, you have a Republican Speaker and a Republican Majority Leader. You know, the two most powerful legislators in Michigan are on the same side, and they don't get along. So, they don't really want to work together on a lot of these issues. So, that's caused for, you know, it's been pretty interesting in Lansing. So, you know, my... Again, with that being the case, I do my best to be as active in the district as possible and trying to get to as many events as possible and being accessible to everyone here in the district. So, that's really it. Again, just want to come congratulate everyone. Thank you. Give you a brief update. I don't know if anyone has any questions? Yes?
Two questions.
Sure.
First of all, is Duggan after you or just his Detroit contingent?
So he, you know, he came out and said that he's after the Detroit contingent. Yeah, yeah. There were only... There were four Detroiters who voted for the plan. The rest voted against it. And he had... Actually, it was just crazy. He was quoted as saying that he is going to actively campaign against them.
Is this the insurance?
On insurance issue, yeah, on insurance issue. Which, to me, just seems... He could have said, you know, "I'm going to work hard to, you know, I believe that this was the right plan," or "There are things we can do." And he could have said that, but no, he's, you know, it was kind of a... I don't know. It left a bad taste in my mouth. We all agree, we want to lower our rates. You know, we want to do what we can to lower our rates. And like I said, I'm part of a package of bills, so hopefully, they'll get an opportunity to bring those up.
So, obviously, there's such a huge differential between what the payment schedules for accidents, for auto accidents versus normal.
Sure.
Is that what you're trying to target?
That's part of what...
Ridiculous.
We have a package of bills. Yeah, yeah. So there's a... It's about, I think, 12 or 13 bills. You can actually go... There's a website, fairandaffordable.com. So, fair-and-affordable.com. And that actually has our package of bills. And you can go on there and take a look. And I'm one of the sponsors of a bill. And it's a, like I said, it's a bipartisan group led by... There was a Democrat from just outside of Ann Arbor who's working on it. And then, there's a Republican who is kind of the lead on as well, who is a former staffer. He was a staffer for about 15 or 16 years in the Legislature, so he knows this issue really well. And so, he's working... So again, it's a bipartisan package of bills. And we're really hoping that the Chair brings it for a hearing. You know, the only issue is the Chair of the Insurance Committee is Rep. Tice, who was the sponsor of the previous bill. And, you know, she's, in essence, said, you know, "It's what I want." Yeah. So, I hope that's not the case, because again, we want rate relief for people here. And we have a way of doing that without cutting benefits. I don't think we should have to cut our benefits to do that when we know there are cost-saving mechanisms that we can put in place, and that's what we're working on. You know, if we don't... If those don't materialize, then we can continue that discussion. But, you know, I don't want people to go out, you know, and have to go bankrupt and go onto Medicaid. You know, with a no-fault state, you can't sue. They wanted to do away with things and then still not be able to sue. In other states, you're actually able to sue to get money back, but you're not allowed to here, and that wasn't addressed in the bill either. So in other words, we would then become one of the more restrictive, you know, as far as insurance here in our state versus other states. Which, to me, it was a giveaway for the insurance companies. And not to get political, although that's my job. You had, you know, the Chair of, you know, the Rep. Tice, who was the bill sponsor and the Chair of the Insurance Committee, who was really pushing this, took more money from insurance lobbyists than anyone else. So, I'm not saying she did anything improper, but, you know, you follow the money. You look to see where people are getting their money from, and I think it can give you a little indication as to what their motive is. So... Did you have a second question? Sorry, I was rambling on there. Okay.
Do you think the gun laws may pass in the House as well?
I wouldn't be surprised if they pass in the House. The makeup of the House.
Snyder's, huh?
Yeah. Snyder's are... You know, I encourage people to reach out to... Obviously, you know, reach out to me, but I'm... I assume I'm on most people in this district on their side on this issue. Reach out to your friends and family that live in other communities and tell them to reach out to their representatives and talk about how ill-advised this is. And just, it's, you know... There are so many other things we can be doing for our state, and this is not one of the things we should be really working on. And additionally, one of the Principal Jeffrey, if you guys know Katie Jeffrey, who's a Principal here in the Ferndale Schools, who I've known since way back when, but she also wrote an op-ed about why it's dangerous to have guns in schools. And, you know, there's... These are people who...
It's exact culmination.
Yeah. Yeah. These are people who are, on a day-to-day basis, are there. So...
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Again, I'm a resource here if you need anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Good to see you all.
Good to see you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Bye!
Smart Jimmie, bye! You get highs, you get buys, that's it?
Yes, I know, right? You guys just follow me everywhere.
Good evening. I am here in place of our Chief. Chief is out of town. Not a whole lot to report, just wanted to say thank you to everyone that came out for the Cops and Coffee event. I hope everyone enjoyed it. We had a good turnout. Other than that, not a whole lot to report, which is a good thing.
It's good.
Yes. Yes. The one thing that I will harp on, that I do every time I'm here, check your credit reports. Identity thefts are... We had a little bit of a slowdown on them, and they're starting to pick back up as we move into the holiday season. So, people are stealing identities and buying Christmas presents, I guess. Other than that, I think that we're good. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any.
How are we doing on porch lights and locked cars?
Doing well now. Things are improving, so... We haven't taken any larceny from vehicle reports in two months. The last one that we did have was over on Poplar, and it was an unlocked car.
Good, good.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to the new Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Be real quick during governmental reports, much about here. I wanted to give everybody a quick update about the project that was going on behind the community center. Jim, were you going to do something in your...
Go for it.
Okay. So we had the new patio. The patio is, I'd say, 90% done. We're waiting on some of the electrical to still come in. So, once that gets completed, we'll have the whole patio area done. The new play structure is very impressive. It's way more impressive than what I even thought it was going to be. It's really nice. So, they're still working on that. They're, I'd say, 85% complete with that. We're waiting on the surface and some of the little... They go through NPSI, which is National Playground Safety Institute, inspection, to make sure everything is, complies. So, please come by and check out the play structure, because it is really cool. Had lots of nice comments about it already, and it's not even complete. So, please come by and check that out and look for our events that are coming up in the ridger. And everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
The patio looks great.
I think that's it for governmental reports. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Four items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? You missed your first out, Jim. Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
There next to her.
Yes. There's some carries. We're very encouraging up here. Okay. Next item is the City Manager's report.
Oh, wow. You're already...
I know. Look at that.
So I had prepared a 97 slide. Talking about how great things are going to be now that the police pension millage has passed.
Yes, thank you.
You know, that was really gratifying to see the support that that millage got from the community. 81% yes on new taxes is incredible. And I think it speaks to how much the residents value the police and all that they do for us. And so, we're just really glad. And that's a... It's a big weight off, because that was really the one thing that was looming out ahead of us that was, you know, sort of major in terms of what it could mean for how we do business here. It would have been a big change to deal with that problem. So, you know, that was really, really nice. So, glad about that. Vacancies. Commissioner Kerziak had mentioned, we have two vacancies on the Recreation Commission. We also have one on the Historical Commission, and we have one vacancy on the Planning Commission. And I don't know that we have got a full canvas of our members who are eligible for reappointment yet. I don't think we do, whether or not they want to come back.
Historical hasn't... I haven't gotten thumbs up or thumbs down. I think there's one other person on Recreation that's on the fence.
Okay. So we may have additional vacancies. The application, if you're interested in getting involved in one of our City Boards and Commissions, the application is available on the City website. Or you can call or email me or Amy, and we can get that information to you. We'll leave those in probably by the middle of December, so that the City Commission can make appointments in January.
Border Review's going to have an opening as well.
Okay. And Border Review?
Brown.
That's a late-breaking vacancy, right?
Ooh, a late break.
Another notable issue that we've put behind us yesterday, actually, it became official, was, you may have heard me talk, or you may have heard us talk over the years about a court case, a lawsuit that the city has been involved in for a number of years now. I think this probably started five years ago. And my second day on the job, I ended up going over to Oak Park for a settlement meeting with the City Managers of Huntington Woods and Oak Park. It said, "Wait, what?" So, it's been something that's been omnipresent. And the crux of the matter was, we were in a funding dispute with the City of Oak Park and the 45th District Court, of which we are... The City of Pleasant Ridge is a member. And it was Pleasant Ridge and Huntington Woods. And it was a dispute over the amount of money that should be distributed to us from certain fees on tickets. And then, Oak Park countersued us, saying that, "Well, we weren't funding them enough." And we went around and around Circuit Court Appeals, went to the Michigan Supreme Court. We went through three different rounds of mediation discussions. And the Michigan Supreme Court ended up kicking it back to the Circuit Court. And so finally, this summer, we gained some traction on settlement discussions. And we were able to, with the City Managers for Huntington Woods and Oak Park and myself, were able to finally come together on an agreement between the cities. And then, it was a matter of getting the 45th District Court on board. And I'm very happy to say that that settlement agreement and an inter-local agreement was agreed to and entered into the... Entered in by the Circuit Court Judge yesterday. So that lawsuit is behind us. At one time, that could have been a $90,000 a year net hit to us, based on what Oak Park was counterclaiming and some of the early decisions. So that would have been another big, big impact on us specifically. So, in the settlement, we maintain our status quo funding responsibility, so there'll be no net impact on our budget from this. We will be taking a more proactive role in managing and overseeing the court, so we will be spending some more staff time on that going forward. But I don't think that's a big issue. I think it'll be good to develop more of a partnership with Oak Park and Huntington Woods and the District Court, I hope. So that's also another big weight off of our shoulders.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's been quite a journey. In somewhat exciting news, the Foundation and the Garden Club and the Historical Commission have partnered together, and they've been forwarding a project to do lighting in Stevenson Park. So there'll be historical-looking light poles similar to what we have in Memorial Park outside of City Hall. So they got together and they all agreed that they were going to put some money towards this project. And then, we came up with, put some plans together and bid them out. We got the bids back today. And the bid was... The low bid was reasonable, so we will be proceeding with that plan. Again, we just awarded it today. I don't have any timetable for when that might be completed, but do expect to see some lighting in Stevenson Park soon.
It's dark. It's exciting.
Yeah, so it'll be a nice... It'll be a nice improvement over there. And finally, you may be noticing that we have some more trucks driving around town, cleaning out sewers. This is the sewer lining project that was approved in the budget and that was awarded last month at City Commission. It has begun. They're working on Norwich, Hanover, West Cambridge, and Oxford. So that will be proceeding. It should be wrapping up by December 2nd. And residents on those streets who will be impacted will be receiving notices and flyers. So, that's what's going on if you see people digging around in the sewers. What's going on? That's all I have.
So actually, they'll get a door hanger on their house the day that they're going to be doing the work, because there's some important instructions for those households. So...
And we're sending out...
We're going to send out, yeah, we're going to send out a blanket notice to everybody either tomorrow or Thursday, so...
Great.
The award. You want to say something on that?
Oh, yes, yeah. So we did apply for Gainesboro Park to the Parks and Rec... The Michigan Parks and Recreation Association. We applied for a design award in conjunction with Living Lab, who are designers on the project. And Scott just got the call yesterday that we won.
This would be great publicity for this bill.
Yes. That's really amazing.
That's exciting.
Yes. And I... And today, I jumped in my final hoop. I got an email from the Railroad that we're going to get a check by the end of the month.
They got her. They had such a good time.
It was so great to combine that with the handwriting, so a lot of people could see the ribbon cutting and all that stuff. I thought that was a very...
Yeah, I know the Railroad and American Bloom reps got a kick out of that.
They did. It was very cool.
Hopefully, we get a plaque or, I don't know, a trophy or something from the Parks and Recreation Association.
Yeah, they'll... They will have a plaque that they give out to the City and one to Living Lab, and they actually have an award ceremony and a dinner, where they present that to Living Lab and the City. When we get more information on that, we'll have it. I'm not sure where the conference is this year. It's...
Hopefully, it's not in Eskenaba or something.
No, it's either... It's either Traverse City, Grand Rapids, or... Yeah, I think it might be Grand Rapids, so...
It's a nice place for a day trip. So we'll let you know when we get more details on that. Great, very cool.
Wow. Any questions for Jim? All right, well, we'll move on to other business then. Thanks, Jim. Come on.
Do you have any?
Got any other business yet?
You have any other business yet? No book club this week. Everybody has December off, so I know you're all worried about that, but we'll reconvene in January.